Chair, move and begin our open session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Purdy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Can I get certification?
Chair, move for certification.
Second.
We get that. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the school board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings, meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such businesses, business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Any...
Mr. Chair?
Ma'am? No, no, we need to vote on that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. We need discussion. Now...
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Paul A. Hawkins as the executive director of finance.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sebeski, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the city of Manassas accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Paul A. Hawkins as executive director of finance. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero.
And that's with the spotlight.
That's right. This is Raffler.
Thank you, Dr. McGurk, Chairman DiMaria. Good evening, other members of the board, and certainly hello to all who are here to celebrate with us tonight. I am very honored to stand before you to present some awesome people. And so we'll begin, first of all, with recognizing National School Counseling Week. February 2nd through the 6th was designated as National School Counseling Week, bringing public attention to the unique contribution of professional school counselors within U.S. school systems. National School Counseling Week, while sponsored by the American School Counselors Association, or ASCA, highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for their careers. Schools across the division celebrated our local counselors throughout the week, and several of them are here tonight. So I'd like for you to join me in thanking our counselors as I call their names. From Dean Elementary School, Heather Peterson. Field Intermediate School, Nicole Yoshida. Metz Middle School, Maxine Taylor. Also from Metz Middle School, Carmen Perez. Also from Metz Middle School, Tim Tibbs. From Osborne High School, Monique Colwell. From Osborne High School, Diane Engba. From Osborne High School, Danielle Tapscott. Do we have any of our other counselors here tonight? Okay, I didn't miss anybody. Thank you all so much for what you do for our students. We appreciate you. I know it's very time-consuming, but it's so very valuable. Thank you very much.
Okay. That's perfect. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Apple Award winners. For the past several years, the school board has recognized the outstanding contributions made by our instructional and support employees throughout, through the award program. The Apple is for instructional, or licensed personnel, and the pear is given to support personnel. All recipients receive an MCPS apple red, you can see on the table, a pear green thermal travel mug, and an I Make a Difference pin to add to their MCPS lanyard. Awardees also receive special parking privilege at their school or department site until the next person is awarded. For the Apple Award, instructional staff was chosen for their demonstration of effective strategies and techniques of instruction, use of innovative approaches to support the instructional program, how they share ideas and their materials, and a willingness to collaborate with coworkers to improve student achievement, effective communication with parents, students, administrators, coworkers, and the community, and demonstration of 21st century skills for the 21st century learner by using critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, innovation, communication, and/or collaboration. We will begin with our elementary schools. Baldwin Elementary, Ashley Francis Shelley. Innovative, dedicated, and supportive are all words used to describe Ms. Frances Shelley, a kindergarten teacher at Baldwin. Her ability to push students to their full potential while maintaining a productive and positive learning environment is what makes her a great teacher. Ms. Frances Shelley is always willing to work hard and offer insight when needed, which makes her a great team leader. Congratulations. Thank you. From Danny Dean Elementary School, Christine Ty Papa. Ms. Ty Papa brings out the best in her second grade students by motivating them to exceed beyond their own expectations. She ensures that each and every child thrives in the classroom by differentiating instruction based on individual needs. Ms. Ty Papa is a natural leader who is able to involve parent volunteers and take on many different roles at her school. Congratulations to you. From Hayden Elementary, Ms. Pam Rose. Ms. Rose is a fourth grade teacher at Hayden who is noted by her colleagues as being an invaluable team member who always does what is best for her students and fellow staff. Ms. Rose is a shining example of an excellent teacher who contributes countless hours towards ensuring students are prepared for the rigor of oncoming challenges. Congratulations. Thank you. Now from Round Elementary School, Ms. Shannon Hilton. Ms. Hilton teaches special education and rises to every challenge with a kind, compassionate heart. She works tirelessly so that each of her students receive the best individualized instruction necessary. Ms. Hilton also effectively communicates with parents and staff to ensure all needs are met at her school. Congratulations. And from Williams Elementary School, Ms. Darlene Pinkos. Pinkos has worked diligently in her new position as the kindergarten ESOL inclusion teacher at Williams, and has not gone unnoticed. Her passion and preparation in the classroom has provided a meaningful learning experience for students. Her ability to collaborate with teachers and incorporate the learning-focused school's framework into her instruction have proven both effective and successful. Congratulations. Now to our secondary level, Mayfield Intermediate School, Jennifer Winger. Jennifer Winger has the ability to make anyone she is working with feel appreciated and valued. She goes above and beyond to provide both enrichment and intervention strategies to the benefit of her students and is eager to collaborate with other teachers. Every day, Ms. Winger takes the time to praise, celebrate, and challenge her coworkers and her students. Congratulations. Thank you. And Mustang from Metz Middle School, Debbie Boswell. Boswell currently serves as a building lead mentor at Metz for the division's teacher-mentor program. She is known for putting a lot of her heart into her responsibilities, including helping new teachers feel appreciated while also helping them get acclimated. Her monthly meetings are known for being both meaningful and enjoyable. Congratulations, Ms. Boswell. Finally, from Osborne High School, Casey Simpson. Simpson is a physical education teacher and with a class roster of over 220 that consists of the entire student body population, from ESOL to honor students. She must work very hard to ensure everyone stays on track and is engaged. Ms. Simpson's dedication, hard work, and kindness, even in the face of great challenges often, is an inspiration to all her students and fellow staff members. Congratulations to you. To all of our Apple Award winners for this quarter, congratulations to all of you. I think Mr. Ryan would like to take a photograph of you if you don't mind.
You want a slide, Jane?
If you'd like to. You got it, bud?
Yep. One, two, three. One more.
Are you guys good? Okay. All right. As you know, the school board pear award recognizes the people that support MCPS behind the scenes. These staff members include our bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodial staff, instructional assistants, administrative associates, and others who support student learning. To be considered for the school board pear award nominees must demonstrate exemplary motivational characteristics, positive interaction with their peers, and noteworthy contributions to his or her department or school location. Tonight, we begin with Baldwin, Maria Malden. Ms. Malden takes the initiative daily to support both teachers and students by always offering ideas and suggestions in regards to instruction to ensure students learn to their fullest potential. She's always positive and cares greatly about others, especially her students and fellow teachers. Congratulations to you, Ms. Malden. Thank you. Elementary school, we have Amanda Griffith. Ms. Griffith is new this year as the instructional technology training specialist, or ITTS, at Dean, but you would never know because she is extremely knowledgeable and eager to assist staff with anything they need. She has offered many training opportunities, and if she doesn't know the answer to a question, she will find it out for you. She is very resourceful and a problem solver, and very much appreciated at Danny Dean. Elementary school, we have Maria Romero. School translator, Ms. Romero goes above and beyond her job description every day. She is instrumental in coordinating the international night at the school every spring and makes everyone feel welcome. She knows all the Hayden families, even those who don't speak Spanish, because she reaches out to the whole school community. Hayden appreciates all the work that Ms. Romero does on behalf of students. From Round Elementary School, Diana Carroll. Ms. Carroll is the cafe manager at Round, where she runs a healthy, efficient, and happy cafeteria. She does it all with a smile. She knows each student and staff member by name and is always offering up kind words. She works daily to ensure everyone is served a nourishing meal and is very much appreciated by her school. Congratulations. And now from Williams Elementary, Olympia Pineda. Olympia Pineda is a custodian at Williams, and she possesses a clear knowledge of her responsibilities and tasks. She is a loyal employee who is willing to assist whenever and wherever she's needed. Her support, leadership, flexibility, and consistent hard work is recognized and appreciated. Intermediate School, Pam Shriver. From Metz Middle School, Paul Owens. Custodian Mr. Owens is a good guy to have around this time of year. He comes into work early to remove snow off the sidewalks and is always thinking about the safety and security of all Metz staff and students. He's always willing and ready to assist regardless of the task with a smile on his face and a very positive attitude to match. Congratulations. Osborne High School, Paula Erickson. Ms. Erickson is known around OHS as being a cheerleader for teachers and their instructional assistants. She's always willing to go the extra mile to support her colleagues. Ms. Erickson assists the special education department by preparing paperwork and working with staff and students to schedule meetings to support student learning. She has established wonderful relationships with both staff, students, and the community, even after school is over by working with after-school sporting events. Congratulations and thank you. From Support Services, Maintenance Division, Jorge Mejia. From Support Services Transportation, Ken Liebert. Mr. Liebert has been driving students with special needs to school for five years, during which time he has maintained an excellent attendance and safety record. Mr. Liebert's ability to adapt to the needs of the students has resulted in them becoming very fond of him. He also gets along well with his colleagues, never complains, and is a wonderful asset to the transportation department. Congratulations and thank you. Additionally, from the central office, we had Linda Tremble tonight, but she couldn't be here due to a previous engagement. So those who know her, please be sure to congratulate her when you see her. This concludes our pear award winners. Congratulations to all of you.
Wait a second. I may have to have you come in a little closer.
I guess they all want to miss all the fun. Before I go any further, I'd like to recognize a former school board member. I guess you're on city council too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But most importantly, a former school board member, city councilwoman, Shell Bass. Thank you for being here. Okay. Committee reports. Academics, Mr. Williams?
Another point this evening. Thank you.
Policy?
A report.
Rollin'. Education support? Well... And Mr. Bushnell is not here. Do you guys have any? We do have one Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. And personnel? All right. Not bad. Board members' comments. Before we start this, I'd like to ask that board members not publicly express individual negative or personal judgments about MCPS staff performance outside of the formal evaluation process. Any such judgments regarding staff performance will be made only by the full board. We're missing two board members tonight, one that's absent and one that has not been appointed yet. I will read that again when we get the full crew here. Let's start with Ms. Spall.
Thank you. Just a couple things. I would like to congratulate Osborne's advanced theater class for placing second at districts for their one-act performance. I'd like to say good luck to the girls and boys varsity teams for basketball that are playing tonight and tomorrow, and I'd like to invite you all to the pre-assessment band concert for Mayfield, Metz, and Osborne. It'll be at Metz on Thursday at 7:00.
Thank you. Mr. Wheaton?
Thanks. I'd just like to invite everybody out to the boys' basketball game tomorrow at 7:00. It's a playoff game, so it's pretty big, and it's up against Stonewall, so it'll be a pretty entertaining game.
Let's hope. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Purdy?
Yeah. Isn't that the third time we're going up against Stonewall?
Yes, it will be.
Just saying.
The rubber match tomorrow night.
So I would like to extend my congratulations to Mr. Hawkins for being selected for the position tonight. I think our school division will be well-served. I think he brings with him a lot of strength, insights, and experience. So as the year goes on, I think we'll be seeing some good things. I always enjoy the Apple and Pear Awards. It's funny, every year at Christmas, I always put, you know, fruit on my Christmas tree, and now every year when I look at apples and pears, I tend to think of people from the city public school systems. Particularly, I want to do a shout-out for our counselors. My kids have been well-served by the counselors that they've had, helping them to kind of stretch where maybe my kids weren't willing to stretch, and challenging them as they should, and then, you know, giving them that extra helping hand when they're kind of getting stressed out and stuff. So I did want to make note of that. And I just always get a kick out of these awards because when you see them walking down, you in the audience can't see them, but they have these big beaming smiles, and I gotta believe they're thinking about their kids, because that's just been the experience that I've seen when I'm talking to the teachers and they're talking about their students. So congratulations to everyone that was recognized tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Sebeski?
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone for taking their time to actually come here and be here this evening. It's really great to have people actually here, and welcome everyone that I know is watching at home. I also would like to congratulate the recognition of our school counselors. I know their jobs are not easy, as none of the jobs are in our schools, and I appreciate all the hard work you do every day to help our students get the direction that they need. Like to congratulate all of our Apple and Pear awardees. It shows what great people we have that work here in the city of Manassas because they believe in our schools and they believe in our students, and it's always very exciting to, as Mrs. Purdy said, see the smiles on their faces as they come down. And I agree with her. I believe that it's a reflection of what they do every day in our classrooms. I also want to congratulate Mr. Hawkins on his position, and I hope he will enjoy working here in the city of Manassas schools, and we look forward to working with him. One of the last closing comments I'd like to make is that our schools, I know, are all working hard as we head into this very difficult time of the year, not just with the budget, but I know that in the classroom, a lot of hard work is going on in preparation for all this wonderful standardized testing that we have to do in May and early June. And I just want all of our staff to know that I recognize all of that hard work. I recognize that in some cases, you may feel it's unreasonable, but this is what the expectation is. And we all know that you all are working very hard. What I've seen in the time that I've been able to be fortunate enough that the citizens of Manassas have elected me to serve throughout the school board, is that, you know, change is never easy, and that was one of the things that I consistently heard, was we need to have change. Then, as change has come about, I recognize how hard that has been for everyone in the school system as well as the community. But I'm very proud of this change and the transformation that I'm starting to see happen here in the city of Manassas. I'm very proud of our schools. I'm very proud of our staff and the hard work that goes on every day. Many businesses and people in the community do stop me now and recognize the work that you are doing, even though you may not always hear about it from all of your elected officials. I want you to know that those businesses and people want to support our schools and the improvement efforts they see happening. They want to be part of something that is, they see as exciting, and they know the direction we're headed is a positive direction, and they want to get on that train and move in that direction. So I leave you with this quote from Gandhi, in honor of Black History Month. By the way, I was at city council last night as we honored members of our community for Black History, and Mrs. Dr. Williams, Sanford's wife, just gave an amazing speech about her history, and it just made me think of that. Be the change that you wish to see in the world. And I try to be the change, part of that change here in the city of Manassas, and I hope all of you will continue to take that positive momentum forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. First, congratulations to Mr. Hawkins on his appointment. We look forward to having him work here in the city. Heard great things about him, so look forward to that. I want to congratulate all the Apple, the pear award winners, and the counselors. As time has progressed in our country, our teachers and counselors have had to do so much more than they had to do before. My dad was a school teacher for about 40 years in New Jersey, and he had to do a lot. But most of his work was in the classroom, dealing with classwork and grading and things of that nature. As time progressed before he retired, and the teachers I speak with now, they deal with kids who may not have coats, who, you know, don't have food at home, who don't have the requisite ability to give them the computer or other things, assets they need to do their homework. Teachers and counselors do so much more today than they had to do 10, 20, 30 years ago, and oftentimes, we don't appreciate that. So I really thank them all, especially the ones who are honored tonight for the work they did, and their families as well, because their families are part of that. And as you saw tonight, there were many family members here supporting them, so congratulations to them. Good luck to the basketball team. I know the girls' basketball team is playing as we speak against Patriot, and Mr. Wheaton and Anna mentioned the boys' basketball team plays tomorrow, so good luck to them. I had the pleasure of speaking at Osborne earlier this week. The FBLA had a speed networking event where they invite speakers in from the community to speak about their careers. They asked excellent questions, and I wish I could do it every day because some of the things that I learned were pretty interesting. So thanks to Mrs. Bennett and to the school for opening up their doors to business people coming to speak with them, and hopefully they got out of it as much as I did. And the last thing I want to mention is Black History Month. Next meeting, I'll have something more extensive to say on it, but as Black History Month progresses, I hope you take time to learn a little bit about Black History in the United States. Thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht? Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just so I'm clear, though, I can still pick on our, the guys who call themselves leader in Washington and the folks in Richmond who don't do too much, right? They are all yours. Okay, cool. I'm not going to, but I just want to make sure I had to get that straight. Not tonight. Oh, wow. Mark this date down on your calendar.
Seriously, we're serious, no, a serious congratulations to our Apple winners, our pear winners, our counselors, and really to our staffs. I think the comments that Mrs. Sebeski made, Mr. Williams were just echoing to. The change that we are seeing, this school system is headed in the right direction, and I trust that the members of the community see that and have the confidence in your locally-elected representatives to do what's right. I will be in Richmond on Monday with other members of the Virginia School Board's Board of Directors. We'll be meeting with members of the General Assembly, and I'll have a follow-up on that when we get back. And then next Thursday, we have a quarterly governor's school meeting, and I'll be at that also.
Thank you, sir. What everybody else said. Was it last Saturday or the Saturday before its academic was on? We had a budget meeting. We were unable to attend it. I've asked Mr. Spall to remind me when it is next year as soon as possible, so we won't schedule a budget meeting on that day, because I'd love to go down and look as good on camera as he does. Won't be difficult. We tied for first, and it was a playoff question, split second, and we didn't get it. But our kids did admirably, and I was very, very proud of them. kids did admirably, and I was very, very proud of them. I don't know if you can find it online or whatever, but if you can, it's pretty special. And if you can't, call me, you can come over, I've got it DVR'd. Last night, the mayor gave the State of the City address. It was a very positive message, very positive for our schools, which it should be. You can go on their website and pull up their meeting and watch that. I'm gonna go a little bit more into what Dr. Anastasia Williams was honored last night, and she stood down here, and I'm not gonna try and repeat what she said, but you need to go on the website and listen to what this young lady had to say. It was very moving, and it's just, I don't know how Sanford ever got her, but it was very, very impressive. And, come on! Come on!
He's better than you. I'm betting on him, by the way.
Yeah, so would I. But, watch it. I beg of you, go online and watch it, and fast through everything else, except for the mayor's address, because everything else was kind of boring, except for that awards down here, and she was spectacular, simply spectacular, and we are very lucky to have her in the And I am done. So, now we have citizens' comments. I have a list with no one on it. Did anyone want to speak? I'll save you 45 seconds, I'm not reading this then. Nobody? The mayor, anyone at all? Anyone at all? Okay. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sebeski.
No.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski. That's what I wrote down. Is there any discussion that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? carries 5-0. Is there anything else we have on the agenda? We have the superintendent's FY '16 school board budget presentation.
That might be why some folks hung their rags.
Is that why?
I'm not positive.
I just figured they wanted to hear the board members' comments.
We're not that entertaining.
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, Vice Chairman Albrecht, and school board members. Tonight, I come to you with our 2015-16 proposed school year budget. Part of our presentation will be the Division Progress and Accomplishments, State Budget Challenges, Budget Priorities, Parameters, and Process, the fiscal year 2015-16 proposed budget, as well as our upcoming budget meetings. But before I get into the budget itself, I would like to highlight some of the accomplishments from our efforts to date. They're not all inclusive, and I could easily spend hours talking about the people in this school system that have worked so very, very hard. Tonight, we've had board members talk about the work that has taken place in our school system, but I can honestly tell you, and I'm, I know that I'm going to spend a few minutes extra talking about this, but I think that our staff needs to be recognized for the work they've done. I have never worked in a school system with people that have worked so hard, and I've said to some that I've never had to push people the way we've pushed our staff, but it's been for our kids. And so, what I'd like to do is highlight the things that have taken place, so that when we talk about our fiscal year '16 budget, that we can see how far we've come and what our next steps are. Year one started in my first year here in the 2012-13 school year. We began the year with audits, identifying academic technology, communication, compensation, human resource, all of the, we looked for where the deficiencies and the strengths were. We wanted to know what was affecting student achievement, finance, operations, and transparency. But first and foremost, as we began looking, the one thing that everyone talked to me about was the performance of the schools to increase the graduation rate at Osborn High School and have it become fully accredited. The state of the schools in 2012-13 was that Osborn High School was accredited with warning both in academic performance and graduation rate. Hayden and Dean were focus schools. Metz, Mayfield, and Baldwin were in school improvement. Round and Williams Elementary Schools were the only schools not under the supervision of the Department of Education. The Division was at a juncture where the Department of Education was moving forward to establish the identification of our textbooks, an instructional framework, and a process for response to intervention with our students. All of the schools were under the supervision of the Department of Justice in regards to implementation of ESO services. The relationship with the Department of Justice had become adversarial because the Division had not followed the agreed-upon requirements. Discussions with the Department of Education, the Department of Justice, the Secretary of Education, and the Governor's Office resulted in opportunities for the Division to plan on its own what needed to take place, and then submit its plan for approval to the state and the Department of Justice. Beginning in January 2013, teachers, administrators, and support staff began the process of identifying what needed to change in Manassas City Public Schools. First and foremost, the Division had to remove its silos between schools and the Division with other divisions. When schools work in silos, students do not have the access to equal opportunities to information, resources, and as a Division, there is a loss of information and support to the schools. The silos came down in a matter of six months, and it's only because of the people that work in this school system. For the schools, it meant establishing a K-12 instructional framework that our teachers played a part in designing and reviewing and approving, not the Department of Education. Curriculum mapping took place in all grade levels and subject areas, and that began in the summer of 2013. This Department of Education wanted to do it for us. Division-wide textbook adoption took place. We picked our own textbooks, and we needed those textbooks because they needed to match the standards of learning. A college board pre-AP springboard curriculum was decided upon in grades 6 through 8 because the teachers knew that the kids needed to be stronger in their literacy to be more successful and have the opportunities at Osborn High School. Common unit assessments were designed at all grade levels, and, you know, they worked once someone turned around and had to rework that work because they were learning while they worked their first summer, and we used interactive achievement that also opened us to opportunities to work with over 50 other divisions because they too use those same common assessments. We, they wanted targeted professional development the teachers asked, that teachers could request and participate in. We implemented a response to intervention program with planned students' intervention, whereas in the past, when kids were not being successful, we sent them to child study and they automatically, or maybe not, went into special education. And response to intervention adds another layer of support before students are considered for special education. We have a university and universal screening and progress, progress monitoring through AmesWeb. Previously to that, teachers talked about hours and hours and hours of assessments, and now through AmesWeb, it's done in less than 30 minutes per child. PE teachers talked about they didn't have a curriculum, and they got together on their own and identified the Spark curriculum that we still use today. There was a reorganization of the Special Ed Department so that we could better serve our parents and students. And our pre-K teachers established a neighborhood-based full-day preschool program under VPI that was so strong during the summer, I got a call from the Department of Education and said it was the strongest program development they'd seen across the state. And human resources, and, you know, that was work that was happening in the schools. Then, at the central office level, there was revision of all the school board policies, and that was a partnership with the school board in that process, and regulations that reflect the national school board policy format. There was a revised teacher mentor program at the request of the teachers and the program, and they got together and worked with their, the mentors worked with the mentees, and looked at what changes need to be made, and today, our program is based on that, on the work they did. They coordinated and implemented new evaluation instruments for teachers, educational specialists, school nurses, school counselors, and administrators. I'm still in the same year, year one. There were revisions to the employee recognition program that came out of the superintendent's advisory council for Pear, Apple, and Agnes Meyer, what you see today are the changes those staff members made. We also had the implementation of triennial background checks, and that was one of the projects from the board. It was very sound. In fact, there's some school systems in Maryland that are now considering that same process. We have a revision of extra pay for extra-duty job descriptions. We're still in that same year, where we're looking at how, when people are asked to do something, what is it you really want them to do, and are they being compensated for what they're doing? And we expanded our recruitment efforts in order to establish a more diverse staff. In communication, we developed a communications plan, a boot camp speakers bureau, a communication training for principals. We now have at-the-board meeting updates that go out following every single board meeting, a new website, a new brand identity. We launched a social media with Twitter and Facebook. We did the Me Be There campaign. We started Saturdays with the superintendent that fall, and we have a community engagement sessions for CIP and Strategic Plan, all in 2012-13. In finance, we supported a classification and compensation study, and through that, the board worked, and we improved teacher salary scales. Remember the bathtub kind of thing we had? We replaced the financial and payroll system that was originally purchased in 1986 and a separate budget system purchased in the 90s with an integrated business system. The previous systems were outdated, and they could not accommodate the changes of VRS, and I was surprised at the amount of Excel spreadsheets we were using when I got here. We also began a zero-based budget process. That was the only way that we could make all the changes that I will talk about in Phase Two that required extra people to be hired, is through that zero-based project, process that we still use today. In maintenance and facilities, they implemented a comprehensive five-year facilities and maintenance plan, developed a division-wide custodial handbook and training program. There was a joint CIP process with the city that was invaluable. Out of it came a long-range facilities master plan. We provided web-based bus routing information to our parents, and we redesigned the bus routes because we were $2 million short in the fiscal year '14 budget, and today, we're still, I still wish we could go back to what we had, and one day, we will, when the state decides to fund us properly. And we established a quarterly safety and maintenance inspections at all schools, which were beneficial to our employees and guaranteed the safety, guarantees of safety of our employees and students. At the time that, during that 12-13 school year, some of the things that I heard was that we really were a community of discord, a community of discord was growing between the city and the schools due to lack of communication and collaboration within the community to support the schools and raise achievement. Two major community engagement events took place during that year and started changes that we'll talk about tonight. The joint CIP, an event that we participated with the city jointly, resulted in a five-year CIP that we still follow today. The Manassas City Public Schools Strategic Plan development was also a community process, and it guides the work of the Division and is updated and presented annually to the school board. Both events established a foundation for the work that needed to be accomplished in the school, and as a result, we have a balanced scorecard and program evaluation that takes place in monitoring those processes. The last 19 months, Phase Two, has been a period of implementation, monitoring, and continued focus on practices and procedures. The staff in the schools and at the central office level have been committed to turnaround processes that increase student achievement, improve the performance and work of the Division, and this is why our teachers say change, this change has been hard. To support student learning, we now have career pathway planning in grades 7 through 12, and that is required by state statute, and they do that through an obviance program. We have a K-8 STEM plan with Project Lead the Way in PISCO, with STEM coaches and STEM teachers. We have a counseling program that follows the standards of the American School Counselors' Association, and we're in the process now of developing a secondary guidance plan that embraces career and technical education, STEM, and workforce development, and that will be in place by the end of the year. There are more dual enrollment opportunities for students, and the opportunities will continue to grow. The future holds more opportunities for students who graduate from Osborn High School with college credits. There's an establishment now of an instructional framework that's K through 12. It's utilized in all of our schools. We have schools, we have our students that are at the elementary school from pre-K through 4th, and then they quickly transition through two schools and finally end up at Osborn High School. Schools can't be siloed, and neither can teachers in classrooms. Teachers work with students. Students do not reboot from teacher to teacher, and now with an instructional framework, it all works in unison. We have learning maps in all core subjects developed by teachers and academic coaches based on the Virginia standards, and this ensures that all kids have equal access to information, resources, and rich experiences. We have the implementation of a new digital curriculum in world history at Osborn High School, where we're supported by tablets, creating a one-to-one environment for 9th and 10th graders and soon, our new rising 9th graders. Two years from now, Osborn High School will be one-to-one in grades 9 through 12. Osborn High School students will be engaged in a learning process that not only prepares them for college, but the world of work. The Avid Program, which has, the students speak so highly of, those that are involved in it love it. The Avid Program provides support to students who are planning to go to college, and it's for all kids. It establishes a foundation of skills necessary for success. Osborn High School is in year two of implementation. Metz is in year one with after-school clubs. A CTE committee has been established to design a K-12 CTE program so that all students have experiences in exploring different careers while working within a soft skills curriculum that will prepare them for success post-high school. 7th and 8th grade students now work with counselors through the novience programs, participating in individual academic and career planning. CTE offerings have been expanded to include pharmacy tech one and criminal justice. This is just in the last 19 months, and I'm continuing. To support student success, we've also had new start and release times with later high school start times. We have academic reviews that have been done at Osborn High School, Mayfield, and Metz. There's professional development now just for, not just for teachers, but all staff. We've established a K-12 attendance and K-12 discipline committees, and we now have someone that supervises the attendance and discipline among all schools, so that school discipline and attendance isn't siloed, and that it's all reported, and that we talk about our strengths and our struggles. We have a positive behavior intervention and support program that we're working with George Mason University to implement in all schools. We've implemented a visitor management system at all schools. We've expanded even more our recruiting efforts to hire the best and brightest and diverse teaching staff. The superintendent's advisory committee identified weaknesses in our substitute selection, orientation, and training process. Through their work, a process supported by a handbook, training, and recruitment has been established. New employee orientation has been designed so that training is face-to-face in all areas as opposed to partially online. Finally, an established process to check and verify the certification of all current and new employees ensures that all teachers and staff have been fully vetted beyond the work of the Department of Education. work of the Department of Education. In community and engagement, we now have a parent and community leadership academy with 30 participants. We have a superintendent's advisory council, or committee, made up of teachers, and another with high school students. We still continue our Saturday with the superintendent, which is designed for parents and the community. We have school board liaisons who do a wonderful job and work hard in trying to make that connection between what happens at the division level and what happens at the school level. In support services, when we think about that we now have a five-year facilities plan, that plan maintains 1,833,136 square feet, including all of our trailers. We have 449 classrooms, including our trailers. And we have 63 buses. And I say all that because all of that is maintained as a part of our five-year maintenance plan, general maintenance program, and our CIP. The cost of our five-year maintenance plan, which didn't exist prior to 2012, the 2012-2013 school year, the cost this year for it is $817,000, and next year will be $846,000. That's on top of the $1.1 million we spend just on regular maintenance. Our annual utilities are running us about $1.6 million. And to curb those costs, this year, in this year's budget, we're recommending a hire in our operations department, in Mr. Hilton's department, and that person will be totally responsible for lowering the costs of our utilities. And our first, our first act is to make sure that he, that we find enough that pays the salary and benefits. And then beyond that, work to greater, to greater savings. Very similar with what happened to us with Linda Trimble when she began working as our purchasing agent. And if you'll recall, she saves more than a half million dollars per year, much more than her salary. There's been many things that have taken place across the division with how we plan. Jenny Dean has had a renovation replacement study that we're going to be using as we plan for our 2012, 2020 to 2030 plan, planning process. We now have security cameras all throughout our schools because we've applied for grants and we've achieved those. We've got, we've handled the boiler replacements and we've demolished buildings and we've added on to Osborne High School. We've improved their parking lots. And Metz now has a new track, and they can now have competitions at their school. And we also have baseball and softball fields that Osborne High School and Metz will be sharing. We also have a new entry system into our schools with access reader cards. I know that sounds like, you know, I'm getting into the weeds, but the thing is, these are things that our division, the people in our division have been doing in the last 19 months. Everyone has been so very busy. In technology, which is way over my head, the things that I do understand that they've done is they've replaced, they've replaced 1,500 antiquated computers. They've added 351 computers to bring the student to computer ratio to two to one or better at all Manassas City Public Schools. They've implemented a one-to-one tablet initiative. They've updated our division infrastructure with wireless connections, with broadband access. The things that have been accomplished with just the limited people that we have in our technology department is unbelievable. And if anyone wants to see that work, it is all monitored through our balanced scorecard and our program evaluation is guided by that, as well as our strategic plan, which can all be found on our website. So, with all that's been done, what are the accomplishments been that our teachers and students have felt? Osborne High School, we've had steady progress on our SOLs, but I would like to add that the work on our student achievement began 19 months ago. And we've had one test last spring of SOLs since that work began. Along with that, Osborne High School took a huge leap, and they became fully accredited. They have graduation rate increase. Their auto-tech program is now National Auto Technicians Education Foundation accredited, which is big stuff for our kids that graduate from there. 1.65 million in scholarships. Gates Millennium Scholar, fine arts Grammy nominee for three years in a row. Their Eagle Branch has won the Apple Federal Credit Union Branch of the Year Award. Our Model UN was the top school at the TANAM Conference. And we have a high school teacher, Heather Walkentin, that won the Franklin Kaiser Distinguished High School Chemistry Teacher of the Year. Osborne High School's very, very busy. At Weems, right now, they're a national finalist for the National Excellence in Urban Education. We found out that right now they're bronze, they're at the bronze level. Mid-March, they will find out if they are, will move to the platinum or silver level, silver or platinum. And they have been already invited to go to Dallas, Texas to receive their bronze, and hopefully instead it will be silver or platinum. But if it's not, I'm so proud of the work that they've done. They're also known for, as a higher expectation school through the Department of Education. Round is one of our distinguished, is noted as a distinguished Title I school and a high expectation school. And Hayden, remember earlier I said that they were a focus school? Well, no, they're not anymore. They've increased their student improvement, and they are no longer identified as a focus school. Our governor's school, when I first got here, we didn't have enough kids in the program. We filled all but one seat this year. And next year, we have, I believe, 16 students that have already made application. We've also, our governor's school team won Best in State and Best in Region with a Verizon Innovative App Challenge. And guess what? One of those students was ours, again from Osborne High School, Catherine Krim. The Integrated Math and Science Program now came out of Manassas Next. It was an initiative, I think, that was a joint project between the city and the division. But it's now a program that's at work, and they're being recognized with the General Assembly. Our English Speakers of Other Language program that we call ESOL, well, it's now exceeding the state requirements. And I'll show you what it looks like in a few minutes in our elementary schools, what the kind of results that they're receiving. And technology and STEM, Manassas Public Schools has been recognized in EdTech Magazine, in the Pisco Education Journal, both for how they engage, how Metz engages students in their learning processes, as well as the school system as a whole. And then the Metz Middle School Robotic Team won the VEX IQ Team Challenge Award. None of these things can happen without leadership. We have 22 teachers participating in the first-ever Aspiring Leaders Program. Their cohort is very important because as they work through this cohort, work through the cohort as first-time people, they will be helped to frame it to be even stronger and better next year. We have a JMU Leadership Cohort that started in January, last month, at Osborne High School. We have 19 teachers that participate in the student, the superintendent's advisory committee, two Osborne High School students that are school board liaisons, 11 students participate in the students, the superintendent's student advisory committee. We have a leadership opportunities that have expanded for students at Osborne High School through Student Congress, Key Club, a new interact club started by students, leadership classes through career and technical education program as well. And we have 30 parent and community members who are participating in the first Manassas City Public Schools Parent and Community Leadership Academy. And their participation will guide as we, as we move forward into Cohort Two. So what does this all look like? As you will notice, one of the schools that I want to highlight is Osborne High School. Well, when they were accredited with warning, it was in the area of mathematics. And as you can see, they grew from 55% to 80%, and their English has increased from 78% to 83%. If you look at their graduation rate, it's no longer a problem. The only problem I think they have is that they continue to strive to take it to the 90th, over the 90th percentile. But if you'll notice, back in 2010 with that cohort, they started at 76%, and now they're at 86%. And while their score from the previous year is down one, it's just four tenths of a point, folks. The areas in green are where they can continue to raise the bar for their students. When I looked at our data for our ESOL students, remember that was the students that are learning to speak English, I found something so very profound. When I looked at our elementary, how, what our elementary school classrooms looked like, I discovered that at Baldwin, for instance, 85 of 129 of the students require ESOL support. And at Weems, 107 out of 164. That's one point of reference. But the greatest point of reference, when I first got here, and after I gave my 100 Days Report, I said that all of our ESOL students would learn to speak Spanish, speak English within three years. So look at the red. When we started out in the blue, we were 66, 59. You're looking at high numbers of students that are sitting in kindergarten classrooms. And our kindergarten classrooms today are the first-grade classrooms of yesterday. So all of our children that do not participate in a pre-K program come to us, and they are working at warp speed to catch up. And then we have our students who are learning English. So they're in triple warp. So when you look at the work that our elementary teachers are doing, when 66 and 59, 54, 50, and 65% of their students come to them learning, and they want to learn, the teachers are, they're learning English, and they're learning our Virginia standards. So our demographics, the demographics, we're a very diverse school system. We have a rich culture of experiences in our classroom. Actually, we have 55 languages, home languages that kids come to each day to our schools in the division. Our primary language, home language, is Spanish. Now, I'd like to share with you the major challenges we're facing in balancing a budget that meets the needs of our students, parents, and community. The first slide has, and this is a slide we talked about last year. Our funding today is not the same as our funding of yesterday. Now, remember I said that our kindergarten and our first-grade academic programs are, they're yesterday's second and first. So we've had to purchase new resources, work with our kids, we've had to do a number of things, and actually, the allotment that we receive from the state is much less. Today, if we were receiving at least the same amount that we received back in 2009, we would be $7 million more dollars within our budget. That means that just one thing I can think of that bothers me the most, and most times, especially during the winter, is our bus schedule would be changed, and it would be back to the way it was, because we could afford to buy new buses. With the state funding reductions to education since 2009, they've eliminated lottery support for schools' construction and operating costs. And that's been, that cost Manassas about $2 million. They've implemented support cost caps, and that's resulted in $1.7 million loss of revenue. We've lost cost of competing. And when they don't, when we, when they do not continue to allocate cost of competing, we can't tell our teachers, "I'm sorry, we're not getting cost of competing anymore from the state." No, we have to, that has to come out of our budget. And that loss was .8 million. There's also been numerous other adjustments to the funding formula, some of which we're going to be facing as we continue to improve. The more we improve, the less money we receive from the state. We've also had state mandated costs in the VRS pension. And the estimated cost to that with those increases, and I'll show you what that'd look like on the next slide, it's $3.5 million to the division. So if you look at your VRS group rates, the General Assembly sets the rates for teacher pensions. When the recession hit, investment losses created a much larger unfunded pension obligation. To make, to complicate matters, pension rates were set at historically low rates to reduce state and local funding to the pension plan. And we are now paying today because of those decisions. The governor has proposed a change in the pension plan for fiscal year 16 to 14.5%, which is included in this budget. The Senate Finance Committee, the Senate Finance Committee and House Appropriation Committee is also looking at that. So now what I'd like to do is move into us and talk about our budget priorities and the process that we followed. As with every year, since the first, since the 20, January of 2013, we follow now a zero-based budget. It's the best way that we can do to identify money. And I can tell you, this year with our budget, if we had not done zero-based, I don't know how we would have gotten to where we are, because we're really almost, I would have to say we're at the bone marrow now. It's gonna, it is difficult, especially when the, when the General Assembly is allowed to mandate, vote on, approve mandates that they don't fund. I'd also like to add, and Mr. Bushnell's not here tonight, but he made a recommendation that we start the budget process earlier. We started the CIP process earlier and afforded people in the community that opportunity to come forward through public hearing to speak about the budget. And I am presenting two weeks earlier, which will allow more people to come forward and talk about the things that they would like to see in the budget. With our budget priorities, I think I've talked a lot about, already about what we're doing. But this highlights, again, what we have to think about with our budget, and that's student achievement, our enrollment increases, the recruitment, training, and retention of highly qualified staff, our fiscal responsibility, and infrastructure and capacity. And that covers technology and facilities and transportation, our capital projects, the big-money stuff outside of our compensation. Our challenges are, will and continue to, will be, continue, will be and will continue to be enrollment growth. Increased participation in free and reduced lunch and ESOL services costs money. Students that, that come from families that are just working to make ends meet need the extra support during the school day because they may not be getting the same support at home. And it's not the problem of the parents, it's, they're trying to make their homes run. State funding reductions include unfunded initiatives, retirement and health insurance cost increases, facility and capacity needs, and technology, the infrastructure and devices. So as I get ready to present what our budget is, there's something that I feel like I need to go over with everyone. Since the first year that I got here, there's been such a great discussion about our, our cost per pupil. And what I would like to do is talk about what that cost per pupil looks like. So if you will look, if you will look at your graph, if you, and what I've done is I've compared Alexander City, Arlington County, Fairfax County, Fall Street City, Loudoun, Manassas Park, and Prince William. If you notice in free and reduced, with our free and reduced rate, we are the highest in the area. If you look at our special education, we serve more special ed students than other divisions in the area. If you look at the number of students that we have learning to speak English, we have more than other divisions in the area. If you look at our enrollment, we are growing. From the beginning of the year, which our last budget was planned on 7,396, and we're now at 7,423. Another cost that we, when you're looking at cost per student, you look at the services you provide. We provide- We provide our students with special ed teachers and ESOL teachers according to the students' needs. We write our IIEPs based on what the students need. We write our ESOL plans based on what students need. And then if it requires staff, we hire those staff. We also have reduced class size but based on the needs of our students. When you have a high free and reduced rate, a high ESOL rate, a high special education rate, you need lower class sizes because every child deserves equal access to a good education. We bring in extra teachers to support those learners, but the classroom teacher has to be able to work with her classroom and meet the needs of gifted and other students. And finally, I'd like to add about our kindergarten program. I've also had questions about Loudoun County. Look at Loudoun County's cost per pupil. Loudoun County has 56 schools, 51 of which have half-day kindergarten. And if those 51 schools hired full-day kindergarten teachers, their cost per pupil would be much higher than ours. So when we talk about what our cost per pupil is, we have to look at what our services are that we provide. And our cost per pupil has to do with our curriculum, our instruction and our students. So one of the, one of the things that I wanted to show is why those costs go up. As you will see, we have an, we've had an 8.4% increase, percent increase from 2010 to 2015 in our, in our membership. We've also had a 36.7% increase in our free and reduced lunches. We've had a 26.8% increase in the number of students that participate in our ESOL program. And our special education has remained constant. One of the things that we have to remember is that children from low-income families hear 30 million fewer words before age three. And they have a vocabulary of about 650 words less rather than 2,500 words in kindergarten. Vocabulary is linked to comprehension. And Title I and ELL students have stark achievement gaps in vocabulary. Reading has a massive impact on brain function and affects understanding in nearly all subjects. A parent's involvement in a child's education is a major deterrent, determinant of success in school. So when we look at these, we look at these statistics, they're not excuses. They are our challenges. And we welcome every child that comes in our door. But in order to teach children, we have to have, we have to have the appropriate staffing and resources to meet their needs. So as we look at our proposed budget, the key cost, our key cost drivers of this budget was school-based staffing to support an increasing student membership, competitive compensation, student transportation, maintenance and operations, technology improvements and debt service for New Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate School. These were the areas that we had to look at when we start, when we started at 15 million and ended where we were now as, on budget. And that's what you'll see on our next page. As you'll recall, the zero-based budget and the purchase of our Munus financial system, we now go through five levels in the budget process. When we first started out, the schools and their departments worked with their people to determine what their needs were. It was a true needs-based budget of things, what would they, what did they feel like it would be great to have and would make everything just absolutely wonderful? And that came in at over $104 million. Well then, the schools and the departments, the school, the principals come in and they make their presentations to the central office. It's actually the Superintendent's Cabinet. And they look at and talk about what is on the list that we see, that we do see as crucial and what things can we put off for another rainy day or when that, when the state decides to improve its funding. So that brought us down to about $97.8 million. So then it gets to the hard part. Then they present the budgets to me. And I think that's the hardest part to me because that's when I start looking at it and saying, okay, this is something that needs to come off immediately. And then there's another list of things that I say, let me think about it some more. And that brought it down just about a million dollars. So it's been hard. It's really, really been hard thinking about, how do we say no? Because like I said, we're down to the bone marrow now. So the Superintendent's final, as we approach that, the proposed operating budget for the next year totals $92,507,971. It's $1,385,590 more than last year's budget, budget. It represents a 1.5% increase. Approximately 78% of the proposed operating fund expenditures directly supports school-based staffing and related costs. In Munus, we have better identified costs by location even when budget and staffing are centrally administered, such as school nurses, custodians. And I guess, and all the special ed, I knew there was one more. This change accounts for the majority of the differences in the percentages shown in the last year's budget, but better identifies costs on our instructional programs in the schools. Budget amounts not specifically identified to a school location as well as division-wide services are shown here by budget authority. So when you look at this, you can see that 77.5% of our budget is resting in our schools, where it should be. When you look at student achievement and accountability, that looks like a large sum of money and you're looking at 9% of the budget there, but what's inside of it? Well, and achievement and accountability, which is our testing, we have 500, about $577,000 there. And in curriculum and instruction, there's 2.6 in there. And in ESOL, $234,000. And in gifted and talented, $282,000. And in special education, almost $5 million. So that is what's resting inside student achievement. When we look at administrative and support services and you see an 8% cost there. We have health services at $223,000, administrative services at 1.3 million, maintenance and operation at 1.6, facilities, $589,000, and then pupil transportation, almost 3.7 million. If you look at our operating expenditures of the pie chart, you will see how everything, you will see one large section of the circle and it represents our compensation, our salaries and benefits, which is 84% of our budget. It doesn't leave much more for us to work with. And this is 2% more than last year. And it's due to your benefits, VRS and health insurance. So when I, part of the compensation adjustments that we have for this year, I'm unable to provide a cost of living increase. And I've included funds to provide an experienced step for teachers and support staff as well as a 2% midpoint increase for administrative staff members. Raises for teachers have been proposed by the General Assembly and 500,000 in additional state revenue was estimated to offset the cost of this increase. But it will, what the state sends our way for the pay raise will not match at all what we have to, what we will be paying. And I've also included 300,000 to accommodate a 5% increase in health insurance premiums. So as you look at all of our operating funds, this chart summarizes our proposed budget for operations next year for all operating funds, including the food service and grant funds. While the school operating fund provides for the day-to-day operations of the school division, the federal grant fund provides for supplemental funding to support specific student populations such as special ed, ESOL and low-income students. The food service fund accounts for the operations of the school cafeteria and is supported primarily by federal USDA funding and sales to staff and student members. The total proposed budget for these funds when combined with the operating fund is Our capital improvement plan, we have an established plan. We are now moving into our fiscal year 16 and what needs to be done. We are also going to be starting our construction of New Baldwin. And we also, along with that, will continue to work on new facility improvements, technology upgrades, bus purchases, and you'll see those in the, on the table. This, this next slide adds the debt service and capital projects funds to the total operating funds as shown on the previous slide. The city allocation is split between operating fund, debt service fund and capital projects fund. After paying for debt service and capital projects, the remaining balance is available for operations. The combined budget for all funds for next year is $110,253,832, which includes approximately 2.7 million in capital projects paid from operating funds and 7.4 million in debt service costs. The net debt service cost increase next year is about 2.1 million due to new debt service payments for, for the bonds issued to build New Baldwin, partially offset by savings from bond refinancings and a payoff of older borrowings. If you look at our fund balance, this slide shows that the projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2015, 16, based on current projections and the proposed use of fund balance to support the proposed budget. Based on the proposed budget and current revenue estimates, we have included just over 2.35 million use of fund balance for the operating fund next year and almost 400,000 in the food service fund as the fund is not as at an acceptable level based on federal program regulations. The five-year forecast approved by the school board, May 27, 2014, projected the use of $2,580,170 from fund balance to support the operating capital and debt needs for school year 16. This budget proposes a use of $2,354,363, which is $225,807 less than the school board's 2015 five-year forecast. These projections also show a more favorable ending fund balance than previously projected. In the food service fund, we will continue replacing equipment and improving our kitchens and dining areas next year. We are using fund balance to support these capital improvements. The food service fund is self-supporting and I'm pleased to announce that we will not have to raise meal prices for the second year in a row and we will still be able to afford these improvements. Finally, when we look at our unmet needs. Last year, when you saw our unmet needs, it was one table. This year, you have two tables. And when we look at these needs, which I'm going to have to move to the screen because it's too small to see, you will notice that many of the things that we were not able to put in the budget have to do with teachers and counselors. We have network administrators. We have benefit specialists. We have intervention specialists in most of the areas, but say two or three. Things that we were not able to put into the budget are people that would be serving our students. On your next slide, and this slide, if you'll notice on the first slide, is 1.5 million. Our next slide talks about non-personnel requests. When we look at school, non-school personnel, it has to do with a adjustment from our per-pupil allocation. We have textbooks, reduced consulting, software and hardware, things that we, that we either discontinued or that we were not able to move forward with. We've also, if you will notice, for program support, we've reduced the avid program tutors, training and supplies with a delay of implementation at Mayfield. They would have started next year with the after-school tutoring program. We have also, we, every year what we look at is trying to expand our use of VPI, our preschool program. And the amount that we would, that we have access to remains as an unmet need. And we would also like to restore our three-tier bus schedule. We have students now that come home and some of them walking in the door at 4:30 in the afternoon. It's not optimal, but it's how we keep our schools open and we, we keep our schools' staff staffed so they can meet the needs of our kids. So what we're looking at in unmet needs, and if, you know, if I were presenting a needs-based budget, my budget would show a need of over 4.8 million. Our, our public budget meetings that we have upcoming, we have one February the 12th, which is on Thursday evening from 6 to 9 at the Central Office Boardroom, on March the 3rd from 6 to 9, again at the Central Office Boardroom, March the 12th from 6 to 9 at the Central Office Boardroom, and finally, our budget work section on March the 14th from 8 to 12 at the Central Office Boardroom. And that is a Saturday. We invite public input on the proposed budget on March the 10th at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. The school board will approve its budget on March the 24th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. And we will, the school board will present its approved budget to the Manassas City Council on April the 8th at 5:30 PM at location to be determined. And that concludes my budget presentation.
Thank you, Dr. McGorick and Mrs. McGuire and the rest of the staff. We know how much work you've put into this and how hard it is to try and balance limited funds with extraordinary needs. You have our work cut out for us. We, we will start on Thursday and I don't think tonight is the right night for any questions. So if you'll come back up and join us.
Thank you.
I believe our agenda is complete, correct? Is it? There it is, sir.
Mr. Chair, move, will you adjourn?
Most by Mrs. Sebesky, second by Mr. Albrecht. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Carries five, nothing. It's ironic. So did you came to require some...